Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you for coming. And I'm going to just reiterate once again, anyone within the council chambers, please turn off your cellphones. Can you hear me now? Okay. Now, okay. First thing we're going to do is to read the items on the consent agenda. And when I am done reading those items, if there are any objections to anything on that consent agenda, please step forward and voice your objection. Number one, approval of August 5th, 2009 minutes of the regular meeting. Number two is Platts. Number three, 2009-07-13, a rezon from unzoned property vacated right-of-way to the I-1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses at North Cliff Avenue adjacent to 1009 West Amadon Street. Item number four, 2009-08-07, a rezon from the AG Agricultural District to the RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses at West Benson Road and Northwest Port Avenue. Number five, 2009-08-08, a rezon from the AG Agricultural District to the Sanford Sports Complex Plan Development District for allowed uses at West Benson Road and Southwest Port Avenue. Number six, 2009-08-05, a rezon from the RS-2 and RD Residential District to the RA-1 Residential District for allowed uses at Northwest Corner of Lobelia and Purdue Avenue. Number seven, 2009-08-13, a rezon from the AG Agricultural District to the Sub Area D of the Shadow Creek Plan Development District for allowed uses at East 69th Street and South Cliff Avenue. Number eight, 2009-08-11, conditional use permit in the C-4 Plan Commercial District to construct a branch bank on a site greater than one acre at East 26th Street and South Dakota Highway 11. Number nine, 2009-08-03, a minor amendment in Sub Area B of the Silver Hill Plan Development District to allow side yard setback reductions from 15 feet to 5 feet on the north and 8 feet on the south to allow a parking lot at 2901 East 26th Street. Number 10, 2009-08-01, final development plan in Sub Area C of the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to construct a multifamily residential buildings at West Norma Trail and West 32nd Street. Number 11, 2009-08-09, a preliminary subdivision plan in the proposed RC Recreation Conservation District and the proposed Sanford Sports Complex Plan Development District to develop recreational, residential, and commercial uses at West Benson Road and Northwest Port Avenue.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dave Loveland. I'll be representing staff tonight. I would like to bring your attention that we would like to defer item number three and we have a request to defer item number six.
Okay. We're deferring item number three and number six. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion?
I'm for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of items three and six.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has been approved with the deferral of items number three and number six. Now we would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Regular agenda has been approved. Okay, before we start our regular meeting, I would like to read just a few statements concerning the recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission. On April 15th, 1958, a referendum election was held to place the city under the provisions of the Legislative Enabling Act of 1949. This referendum passed with a majority vote of 7,781 to 7,612. Then on August 20th, 1959, the Sioux Falls City Commission adopted a city ordinance establishing a nine-member commission known as the Sioux Falls City Planning Commission. And then, and during the past 50 years, the City Planning Commission has responsibly planned for a growing city of approximately 65,466 persons and measuring 17 square miles in size in 1959 to 154,900 persons and 73 square miles in size today. So we would like to congratulate all of those who went before us, and not only members of the Planning Commission, but planning staff, and I'd like to recognize the great planning staff we have today. Would you stand? Okay. Item number 13, 2009-08-06, a major amendment to subareas A, B, C, and D of the Redstone Village Plan Development District to realign subarea boundaries and amend land uses at the southeast corner of interstates 29 and 90. Staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this item and other items this evening. The applicant is represented by Mark Ospos, Architecture Incorporated, and the owner by Dawn Ospos, project manager, Redstone. Purpose of this application is to approve a change in subarea boundaries in conjunction with a revised preliminary subdivision plan which will come later in this agenda. Project is located at southeast corner of the intersection of I-90 and I-29, west of Skyline Heights and north of Skyline Heights and north of Flying J Truck Stop. The area is about 93 acres, does have a previously approved preliminary subdivision plan, and with this application, we'll be looking at a revised street layout and adjustment of subarea boundaries to allow expansion and additional uses at the hotel site. On the north side of the project across the interstate is agricultural uses still outside the city. To the south, it's Prairie Hills North Plan Development District, the Flying J Truck Stop. To the east, it's in the county still, Skyline Heights, rural residential. And to the west, it's industrial and commercial, I-29 and vacant property. Historically, Redstone Village was zoned in 1997 and since that time has gone through a period of adjustments in terms of subdivision plans approved, also uses that were approved in conjunction with neighborhood meetings. Great deal of input came from the Skyline Heights people and the development is underway. There is a hotel on-site, there are road improvements, utility infrastructure. The subareas that are indicated being changed are Sub Area A, which is proposed to increase in size. Sub Area B would decrease in size. Sub Area C would increase somewhat, and Sub Area D would be eliminated. In eliminating Sub Area D, they are renaming that area Sub Area C. So actually, the transitional land uses and buffers that were established with the residential neighborhood against the commercial uses approved will remain in place, and the developer can respond to that with neighborhood comments. We have received a copy of the neighborhood meeting, results of that neighborhood meeting, including support by the neighborhood for the changes, proposed uses, and also the proposed realignment of streets within the subdivision. The major collector to the north would come out, still come out on Kiwanis Avenue, although that has been moved a little bit to the south to accommodate the subarea changes. And a new collector to the subdivision is indicated west of Flying J. The applicant indicated to staff that those meetings with the commercial neighbors, Flying J and so on, are still in progress and there would be, continue to be meetings to resolve the location and construction of the proposed streets. Staff can proceed with the recommendation based on the subarea changes that are proposed, which are actually no change, and the subdivision plan, which does realign the subarea boundaries. A traffic study has been completed and submitted by the applicant and is one of the reasons that the subdivision is being modified. All of the requirements of the application format have been met by the applicant, sewer service is available. The drainage plan needs to be addressed in final engineering plans, but appears to be adequate on a preliminary basis. The applicant has stated that they will construct a new collector road to Kiwanis Avenue in the first phase of development on this property, north of Skyline Heights. The applicant also has stated they understand that they are responsible for constructing the new interchange connection roadway, and the applicant understands that if the new interchange connection roadway is not built at the time of Phase Two, development or revised traffic study may be needed. Staff considers the plan to be complete for consideration by the Planning Commission at this time, and because the subject application does maintain a separation of approved land uses, as previously worked out with the recreational, with the residential neighborhood and response to the traffic study, and as a more efficient and effective layout of land uses on the property, we are recommending approval of the major amendment with the initial development plan and subarea regulations as revised. Copy of the subarea regulations are included in your report. We will be getting a revised initial development plan from the applicant prior to going to the city council meeting. We've had a couple calls in the office from people that live in the Skyline Heights neighborhood who have indicated they have met with the applicants and have no objection to what is being proposed. The applicant is prepared to present to you the results of the neighborhood meeting, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of Steve?
Steve, one question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Steve, one question. You said that the new collector road from the south coming north is on the west side of the Flying J. Originally, in the existing plan, it was on the east side, and now it's going to move to the west side and come up and through.
Perhaps I misspoke. There would be an additional access road into the subdivision on the west side of Flying J. The one that's presently there at the east would remain in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant present?
Good evening. Mark Ospos, Architecture Incorporated. Steve did a good job of explaining the process. We're doing this in order to get our ducks in a row for when the project proceeds. We had a neighborhood meeting last week, which was very productive. We had a lot of good questions, a good turnout, and I think we answered the questions quite well, at least to their satisfaction. Dawn Ospos is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding, or with regard to the developer. And I know that there's at least one resident of Skyline Heights here tonight to answer any questions should you have them. Otherwise, unless you have any questions to me, that's all I have.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item?
Good evening. My name is Marsha Kokange. I'm the president of the Skyline Heights Homeowners Association. We did have a very productive meeting with the developer last week. I can safely say there was more than two-thirds of our residents in participation in the meeting. We had nothing but good comments. There were some good questions raised, and all of our questions were answered to our satisfaction, and so we have absolutely no problem with this development change. Thank you.
Could you hold on just a moment, please? Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Ma'am, the third that weren't there, were they communicated with by written mail or any other, any other way?
We did notice was distributed that the meeting was going to be held, and if they had any questions, they could get ahold of me, they could contact the developer.
And have you had any correspondence with that third that wasn't present?
Yes, in fact, I did. One gentleman called me at home. He came up to my house, and we sat and had a nice conversation. And he said, well, he said, I think they got everything in a row. He said, I think we're good to go. So, other than that, no. The other people, we do have some that work outside of town that are on their way home periodically, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any others?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Call for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the major amendment.
Is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number 13 passes. Item number 14 is a conditional use, 2009-08-02, conditional use permit in the C-4 Plan Commercial District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 3100 and 3110 West 12th Street, suites 110 and 120.
Thank you. The applicant is Jerry and Margie Bernke with Dakota Billiards, and the owner, and I believe they are represented here tonight by the owner of the building, who's Rod Wolfle with Team Two Properties. The purpose is to approve, to renew an expired conditional use permit. The area of the site is 4.575 acres. To the north, there's C-4 Plan Commercial District zoning with undeveloped land uses. To the south, there's RC Recreation Conservation District, which is Sherman Park, and also RA-1 residential zoning with a multifamily complex. To the east, there's C-4 Plan Commercial zoning with a commercial retail development, and to the west is RC zoning, which is the home of the Emond Trailhead. Conditional use permit standards are looked at using four criteria. The first is that it will not create an undue concentration of similar uses. The second is that it is not in an area where unattended children could be expected to frequent, patronize, or recreate. The third is that it is compatible with characteristics of surrounding uses and not injurious to surrounding properties. And the fourth is that video lottery machine placement is not within 2,000 feet of any city park, other video lottery machine placement, or any elementary or secondary school within the city as measured from the closest point of the outside wall to the boundary of the park. The provisions of this section apply to new placements that have been considered after June 1st of 2008. As we, as I indicated, a conditional use permit was approved for this location for on-sale alcohol in June of 2007. The approval at that time had two conditions. The first is that the approval was valid for that applicant only, and the second is that a security management plan is approved by the crime prevention officer. The prospective tenant at that time did not materialize for the owner, and the conditional use permit has subsequently expired. At this time, the applicant is proposing to open, a new applicant is proposing to open an on-sale alcohol establishment and needs the approval of a new conditional use permit. You'll notice on the conditions that I'll read later that the owner, that the owner of the building has requested that he be allowed to also utilize the approval so he would not have to reapply in the event the applicant does not open or later closes the proposed establishment. Conditional use permits expire within one year if no work is completed. The applicant is also proposing video lottery, which is regulated by the stipulation set that I read, that I just read. This would normally be counter to those standards, however, because the owner obtained a liquor license around the same time as the original conditional use permit approval, and because that license is still active, video lottery is allowed to be placed at this location based upon the existing active liquor license. So the applicant should also be aware of all fire and building requirements as related to an on-sale alcohol establishment. But because this application has, application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining the building permit, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions. The first being approved for this applicant or this owner only, and the second being that a security management plan is approved by the Sioux Falls Police Department. We did receive word from Lori Hogstead, who works with the city attorney's office this morning, that the security management plan has been turned in to the police department, and I believe it's been approved already, so. That concludes staff report.
Okay, any questions of Dave?
Yes, Dave, there's no concern with the trailhead right next to it? And the kids riding their bikes on the trailhead all the time?
No, the Parks Department did not have any comments on this, on this application.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Dave?
Yes.
Question, the recommendation is approval with the two conditions. One is approved for this applicant or this owner only.
Yep.
And the applicant is Jerry and Margie Bernke, and the owner is Rod Wolfle?
Wolfle, yeah.
So, this would be...
Maybe it should say "and"?
Say again?
And? Is that what you're going for?
I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Should it be "and"?
Yes, that was the typo.
So, it would be approved for this applicant and this owner only?
Yeah, that would allow both the applicant and/or the owner to operate the, operate an establishment there.
So that's to say that if this applicant, or if this owner left and did something else, a new person could come and buy it as long as this same applicant was running the business?
Right, or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present?
Good evening. My name's Rod Wolfle with RW Properties Sioux Falls.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Wolfle? Looks like we have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? If not, we'll call for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda, item number 14, with the two conditions. The first condition with the approved for this applicant and this owner-only modification.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 15, 2009-08-04, final development plan in subareas A and B of the Pettigrew Heights Plan Development District to construct a 37-unit apartment complex with off-site parking at 616 West 12th Street and 322 South Duluth. Staff report.
Recently, the Planning Commission did look at a rezoning of this same property to allow development of an apartment complex, the continuation of existing office use, and the construction of an off-site parking lot. Subarea regulations were put together to address setbacks, parking requirements, building design, and so on. All of those subarea regulations, we find, have been met in the current application for a final development plan for Volunteers of America Dakotas, represented by Pam Bollinger. The purposes of this request is to construct a residential building to be used for program services for the Volunteers of America Dakotas. Located at 12th and Duluth, the subject property is a 1.2-acre site, currently has an office building and otherwise is vacant. To summarize, to the north, we have a commercial development in this Pettigrew Heights neighborhood. To the south, it's RA-2 residential, as well as to the east and to the west. This planned development of housing office and parking uses to accommodate the Volunteers of America Dakotas, housing facilities for women with children, and 37 apartment units is proposed to be constructed as a four-story structure just west of the existing office facility. A new parking lot is proposed off-site to the east of the existing office facility to accommodate the parking requirements for both facilities. All subarea regulations have been met for setback, landscaping, lighting. The police department has looked at the security of the building and has offered suggestions for improvements. Those will be covered in the building permit. Funding has been awarded already for this project from the South Dakota Housing and Development Authority, and in approving the subarea regulations and initial development plan, the project was put into high gear and the final development plan application submitted. By high gear, I mean that the zoning for the property still has to go to the city council and be heard and approved before this final development plan could be effective, and staff would ask that that be a condition for approval. We've had no input or comments come to staff on this proposed project. All of the details seem to be in order. The exterior wall materials seem to be in good, good appearance, having finished materials consisting of natural wood, bricks, split face masonry block, exterior insulation finish system, and horizontal fibers in its siding, in earth tone or neutral colors. The roof pitch is an 812 with laminate asphalt shingles, and the height is 50 feet, as allowed by subarea regs. by subarea regs. Trash enclosures are provided, parking lot lighting is not indicated, however, in their security management plan, they will be addressing those issues. A neighborhood meeting has been held, and they are prepared to report on that this evening. A fenced play area and fenced patio are provided on the north side of the building with access from a children's area and community room inside the building. Appears to be adequate, all conditions for a final development plan have been met, and staff recommends approval of this final development plan tonight. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of Steve? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Craig Lloyd with Lloyd Construction 1005, Tomar Road, here representing the Volunteers of America in the development. Steve did a great job explaining the process of the development and what we've gone through to make it very homogeneous with the neighborhood and try to bring real value to that area. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Craig, when do you anticipate construction beginning?
We hope, I think it's finally approved on 10th of October, and we hope to start then.
Great. And how long do you think it'll take to construct?
We hope to have occupancy in there sometime around May 1st.
Great.
Any other questions of Craig? Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? If not, we'll call for a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 15 with the condition that the final development plan cannot become effective until zoning is effective.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Item number 15 passes. Item number 16, 2008-01-19, a preliminary subdivision plan in the Redstone Village Plan Development District for the Redstone Village Edition at Southeast Corner of I-29 and I-90. Staff report.
The general parameters of this particular item on the agenda have been previously established by the major amendment, including the street layout, the revised street layout, the proposed new construction of a road access to the west of Flying J, and a realignment of subarea boundaries, and indicating in a concept plan the expansion of the hotel and additional buildings in the commercial district. Staff has had a number of meetings, including engineers, city engineers, with the applicant to discuss the requirements for the subdivision plan. The applicant is working with city engineering on a recommendation for approval, and we believe that they can proceed with that. At the present time, staff is recommending approval. If you have any questions about the details of the engineering plan, I would suggest you ask those of the applicant's representative consulting engineer who is here this evening. The applicant is Damian Grebel from EGA Consulting Engineers, representing the owner, Dr. Lloyd Solberg of Redstone Development. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions of Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve. The applicant, please step forward.
My name's Damian Grebel, I'm with Earhart Griffin and Associates. As the applicant, we understand staff's comments. At this time, we don't have anything further to add, and we would appreciate your recommendation for approval.
Any questions of Damian? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? If not, we'll call for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 16 passes. Item number 17, Public Hearing 2010 to 2014 Capital Program.
Good evening, Mike Cooper, Planning and Building Services. Before I comment on this item, I would just like to digress a little bit because we are celebrating, recognizing the 50th anniversary of the City Planning Commission tonight. But people might be interested to know that we've had zoning prior to that time. The city first adopted a zoning ordinance in 1928. There was five zoning districts at that time, and there was a zoning board established. But there was never any planning or comprehensive planning done until 1950, when we first had a comprehensive plan completed for the city. And based on, again, the state legislature enabling the city to establish a formal planning commission, that's what happened by the 50th anniversary. The Planning Commission took over the duties of the zoning board, although we still maintain a separate zoning board of adjustment for variances. So that's just a little kind of more history of what's gone on in the past, and again, we sincerely appreciate your volunteerism and all the efforts of past, present, and future planning commissioners.
Mike, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
When she was reading the report, she said that it was such a close vote. Do you know what the issues were, the basis of most?
I do not, but I know it took more than one, actually it took more than one election to pass it. So it was, it was somewhat controversial at the time. But today, planning and zoning is no longer controversial.
(laughing) Sure. Funny man, Mike.
Yes, okay.
Tonight, we aren't controversial.
Yes. Well, this is another important function of the Planning Commission, is to look at the capital improvement program. And each year, the mayor submits to the city council a five-year capital program based on input from the different city departments. And the reason that it's an important part of our planning process is because what we do is we look at the projects to make sure that they are in general conformance with our comprehensive plan. So you, as the planning commissioner, are the main board that oversees that process. And we bring to you each year this plan of five years' worth of projects to give you a recommendation. And tonight, I'm going to go through a quick summary of some of the highlights of what's in this proposal. So first of all, what are the sources of the funding for the capital program? For the five-year timeframe, the overall budget is about $471.5 million. The majority of the funding comes from our sales tax. We have our second penny sales tax, which is 37% of the funding. We leveled that off recently, and the .08 sales tax is about 4%. The rest of the primary sources of funds are user fees, state loans, bond funds, federal funds, and storm drainage fees. We have three smaller miscellaneous revenue sources. But the sales tax is obviously the major revenue source. As far as the uses of the capital program funding, the vast majority is for infrastructure, 68%, and then equipment is 12%. Improvements other than buildings, 11%, buildings 6%, land 2%, and then others 1%. The capital program is not only construction projects, but it can also be equipment, vehicles. There's a number of things that we are able to use that funding source for. Specifically looking at the second penny sales tax and the breakdown of that for the capital program, what this chart shows you is that over the five-year timeframe, where the major uses of that money is earmarked. And the darker blue in the column is the portion that's designated for the development-driven arterial streets, the .08. The lighter blue is the balance that's used for highways and streets, and then the green is parks and recreation, and the balance is other departments. So over the five-year program, the average is that about 69% of the second penny sales tax will be for streets and highways, about 16% for parks and recreation, and 15% for other departments. I wanted to go through with you the 2010 and 2011 primary projects, major projects, because those are the ones that are pretty well locked into the program. The outlying two or three years typically are subject to change because of differences in revenue projections or other needs that become a higher priority. So tonight, I'm just going to go through the highlights of 2010 and 2011 major projects. And the first map shows you the public works projects that are in the first two years. Number one is the 41st Street Bridge replacement and flood control dikes, which we're hoping to actually get underway yet this year with the flood control dikes, and to complete that in 29 and 2010. We recently went through the effort, thanks to Jeff Schmidt, of adopting our new floodplain maps, and there's a huge impact because of those new floodplain maps on a number of property owners and buildings. And once we get the flood control project completed, we're hoping that we can go back and modify those floodplain maps again and take a number of properties out of the floodhazard area. So this shows you the primary areas that will be raising the levees and then reconstructing the 41st Street Bridge at a higher elevation over the Big Sioux River. Project number two is reconstruction of Maple Street from Marion Road to Career Avenue. That's currently a two-lane rural section, and this will widen it to an urban section. Project three is completing the improvements along 69th Street from Charger, which is over by Sioux Falls Christian, over to Southeastern Avenue, and the balance of Southeastern Avenue just past the 69th Street intersection. This project will also include an overpass, a railroad overpass along 69th Street, very similar to what we recently completed along East 57th Street. And this is an existing gravel surface roadway that will be brought up to urban standards. Project number four is reconstruction of River Boulevard. The pavement is deteriorated very badly, and this will be replacing the pavement. Project five is reconstruction of 8th Street in the downtown area from Main Avenue to the Big Sioux River Bridge. Again, we have a real deteriorated pavement. We have a boulevard or a median there that we hope to replace with this project. Project number six is West Avenue Reconstruction from Burnside to Russell, another pavement replacement project. Project number seven is completing another mile of what will eventually become South Dakota 100, and this is Powderhouse Road from Arrowhead Parkway north to Madison Street. And that, again, is an existing gravel road that will be constructed to an urban section. Project number eight is the Solberg Avenue Overpass across Interstate 229 that will extend down to 69th Street and Tallgrass Avenue. And we've been looking at that project for a number of years, trying to decide if it's going to go under or over the interstate, and the determination has now been made that it will, in fact, go over the interstate. Project number nine is reconstructing a section of 57th Street east of Minnesota Avenue to improve the sightlines. We have a number of issues along that section of the road because of the traffic and because of the topography of the terrain of the road that causes some concerns for the driving traffic, and this will hopefully solve that problem. Project 10 is part of our rail relocation project where we've identified a new site for the downtown railroad switching yard out on East Rice Street and Timberline Avenue. And this shows you that proposed location. We're currently going through the completion of the environmental assessment because we are using federal funds to complete this project. And then the phase, the last phase, will be coming into the downtown area, constructing a new Y bridge in the Falls Park area, and then removing the existing switching track through the downtown.
But that won't happen in this, or it will happen under this?
We were looking at, in the 2010-2011 timeline, yes, to do both of those phases.
Great.
We actually had originally scheduled the entire project to be done by the end of this year.
Right.
But the environmental assessment has taken longer than we had expected.
And Mike, is that assessment of the new switching area or assessment of the existing?
It's for both. It's including the downtown as well as the new switching yard project area. Project number 11 identifies a proposal for a new elevated storage tank as part of the Lewis and Clark Regional Water System on the south side of 85th Street between Louise and Western Avenues. There currently are two water towers there now that are operated by the Lincoln Rural Water System. This will be a 3 million gallon water tower, which is the largest that is made in the nation, and it's a partnership with the city and Lewis and Clark that we are also going to be using a portion of it for our own water system. So it's going to be a major construction project, again, to complete the, that system that will eventually provide water to the city by 2012. The second category are the parks and recreation projects. And again, we've, we're just highlighting tonight some of the primary projects for 2010 and 11. Number one is the continuation of improvements at Falls Park. We just did the ribbon cutting this year for the new farmer's market structure. There'll be additional improvements made around there with more parking and more amenities. We're developing, the park and recreation department with a park board is working on an updated master plan for North Falls Park as well as West Falls Park. They're looking at things like a skating facility, additional parking, an amphitheater, additional facilities to help with a number of events that continue to be held in Falls Number two is the first phase of the downtown River Greenway between 6th Street and 8th Street on the east side of the Big Sioux River along the Sharapa Place Development. We are currently working on the permitting with the Corps of Engineers and FEMA to be able to move ahead with that project. But that's also one of our quality-of-life bond projects that will be funded starting next year with the construction. Number three is the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum out on East Arrowhead Parkway. This is a project that will include both city funds as well as donated funds, and if you've never been out into this area, it's also adjacent to Arrowhead Park as well as the Perry Nature Area. And it's going to do, it's going to be a great oasis of a regional park system that will eventually be surrounded by urban development. Project four is an expansion of our bike trail system from Falls Park going east to Interstate 29, and this will be primarily on the north side of the Big Sioux River. We're also looking at another phase that will go from Interstate 29 east to eventually connect up to Great Bear Recreation Park. Project five is Sherman Park improvements. Next year will be the 100th anniversary of Sherman Park. That land was, the Upper Sherman site was originally gifted to the city 100 years next year from EA Sherman. And this year, we're working on the softball fields, and that will go as well into next year and beyond with a continuation of improvements.
Mike, just out of curiosity, was Lower Sherman done at the same time, or?
That came later.
Okay.
Yes, that was acquired by the city. That was farmland that came later. The upper portion of the park, or the south end, was the original donation, where the Indian mounds are.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But it was another... But it was another significant gift, and along with McKinnon Park, the beginning of our modern park system. There'll also be a continuation of the zoo improvements, which is shown as project number seven. Right now, the new rhino exhibit is under construction, and there'll also be changes to the main entryway into the zoo. And then project six, which you heard tonight, is the junior football complex on land that's being donated to the city by Sanford Health, another great opportunity for us to deal with a need to expand our junior football facilities. The last map shows you three other projects. Project number one is fire station number 11 near 41st Street and Six Mile Road. We are still negotiating with property owners to identify specifically where this will go. But based on the east side growth, this will become the new east side fire station. If you remember where the park department used to be over on Weber Avenue, that was the original east side fire station. Project number two is a west side branch library that will be constructed in the southwest corner of Memorial Park at 22nd Street and Discovery Avenue. And this will be similar to the Oakview Branch Library that was built fairly recently. We have a huge need for a branch library for the west side. If you are familiar with where the Kaylee Branch is, the use of that has grown so much. And with the population growth west of Interstate 29, there's a real urgent need to get this project going. And then the last project that we've shown on the map is looking in the downtown to expand our public parking. We've had a lot of discussion about eventually moving, relocating the river ramp, and we are currently working on identifying a site and potential funding strategy to accommodate that over the next couple of years. So again, we are looking at how these projects tie into our development projections and how they are in conformance with our comprehensive planning process. So we would appreciate your positive recommendation on this. And then this entire plan will go forward along with the mayor's recommendations for the operating budget, and that will be heard by the city council this month of September. Do you have any questions for me?
Do we, do we need to adopt this or vote on it?
Just a motion for approval.
Okay, okay.
Is what I would recommend.
Okay. I'm looking at Jeff, and he's shaking and said no, so, okay. Call for a motion?
And this is a public hearing, but I don't know if Rob wants to comment on it, so. Okay. Maybe he'll write something nice about it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would move for the adoption of the 2010-2014 capital program.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that report, Mike. Number 18, 2007-2008 conditional use permit monitoring.
Yes, thank you, and good evening again. On your screen, you'll find, in just a second, you'll find a map that shows the projects. It's a little fuzzy, but because there are so many, there were 103 projects that staff went out and looked at over the last, well, we did it in a week, a couple of months ago. And just to conform, to see if projects that were approved by this body have been in conformance with the conditions that were adopted at that time. The monitoring program was initiated in 1991 to evaluate the status of approved conditional use reports, or conditional use permits, sorry, and staff monitors approved CUPs that are approved with conditions. Staff conducts field monitoring and evaluates if the conditions have been met, and the data is compiled into the report and reported to the planning commission and interested city departments for follow-up. The follow-up process is that for those CUPs that have been approved that are non-compliant, staff follows up with a letter to notify owner, the owner or the applicant of violations on their site. If no response or inadequate response is not received, further action may be pursued, which can include a revocation hearing, which has occasionally come before you for consideration. In 2007, there were 57 permits approved with conditions. In 2008, there were 46 approved with conditions. And in 2000, and so for those permits that were approved in 2007, we found that 38 of them were compliant. Go forward, back to one. And then in 2008, then 21 of them were compliant. One of the things that you may have noticed in your report, actually, I'll take a step back here, the following slide, the slide on your screen right now is a number of conditional use permits that were approved every year. And these are, again, conditional use permits that were approved with conditions. Those were, those which were approved without conditions are withdrawn or denied or not monitored in this report. On the following slide, you'll see that there is a chart that details compliance or non-compliance with the number of permits that have been approved. In 2007 and 2008, you'll notice that the non-compliant percentage at the end of the chart increased by a significant amount. The reason behind that was, and you may remember some of this, is that security management plans had not been getting approved prior to their adoption or prior to the granting of the liquor license by the city council. And so because of that statistic, we've coordinated with the Sioux Falls Police Department, the Community Services Division, Officer Greg Schmidt, and with Lori Hogstedt, who's in the city attorney's office, who actually does the license administration. So before a conditional use permit comes to you for approval or for consideration, we make sure that either Officer Schmidt has been in touch with the applicant, at least on the conditional use, on the security management plan, or that it's already been approved. If not, then that's up to you to decide if you want to move forward. But we make sure that the status of that security management plan is known by Lori Hogstedt then in the city attorney's office prior to the taking of that application to the city council for the license itself. So we hope that this number goes down significantly next year as we've adopted this procedure then. So the following slide, then, the permits by quadrant, you'll see it's fairly evenly split between the southeast and the southwest, or the southwest and the northeast, excuse me, and then the northwest and the southeast are also fairly similar to each other. The southwest has much of the shopping areas of the city and includes some of the larger institutions, the educational facilities, hospital facilities, and things like that, and the peripheral, things that go along with that. One of the things to note on the following slides, and we can go through those fairly quickly, that in the compliant rating for each one of these sections is remarkably similar. And I think that is a result of just the similar nature of some of the applications that we've had and then the resulting experiences. So in summary, and you can go through those fairly quickly, see about, the compliance rating for each one of those has been about in the mid-50s. The recommendations then in the report that you received include three. One is that the verification of conditional use permit stipulations somehow occurs during the final inspection period prior to occupancy permit. The third, or the second, is that particular attention should be given to landscaping and screening stipulations. Other than the security management issues that we've run into this year, landscaping and screening are typically the largest issues that we have, whether it's outdoor storage or the, you know, somebody hasn't planted trees or something like that. And then thirdly, relates to the security management, in that communication between city departments, various agencies, staff, and applicants should be improved and worked on. That includes agencies like downtown Sioux Falls or city departments such as zoning, police, fire, and license administration. So that report, that concludes the basic report. You've got the copy, and so I can take any questions that you have.
Any questions of Dave?
Madam Chair. Dave, with respect to the non-compliance that occur, would you say that the majority of the non-compliance, once notified, are taken care of and they come into compliance without?
Yeah, absolutely. I think a lot of times it's just a, you know, just something that got missed in the whole process by the applicant as they were developing their site, so.
More of a communication or education?
Yep, yep. And so, you know, as soon as contact's made, the vast majority of sites will come into compliance without any need for further discussion.
You showed some of them being expired or abandoned. Does that mean that if it was for that applicant only and then a longer use?
Yep, I mean, that can include things, you know, somebody proposed building, building a building, and then that didn't get constructed, or it could include, you know, like you've heard tonight on one of the applications, that, you know, an owner of a building had a prospective tenant that didn't materialize. But conditional use permits expire after one year without any work done or inspections being conducted. And so that accounted for a fairly significant number of the, of the ports or the permits over the last two years. The other, the other category that I didn't mention was under construction or not expired, I guess, yet. So some places hadn't begun construction and, but were still within, you know, the one-year timeframe, or they were under construction at the time of inspection, and those sites will be monitored then next year and included with that report to make sure so.
Okay. Any other questions of Dave? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Rob, you have any questions? Do we just adopt the report or accept it, or?
You can accept the report. A motion for acceptance.
Okay.
Unless you don't like it.
I wouldn't do that to you, Dave. Okay, all of those in favor, or, excuse me, a motion to accept the report?
I know that we accept the report. It's not a major.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We accept your report, Dave. Thank you very much. Okay, number 19 is adjournment. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
I think you should.